All right, now he's checking on.
His Larry, is it? Just in case.
Always better see if it's Larry.
Thanks for coming, Jim.
Of course, I appreciate the meeting, Justin.
Are you gonna officially open it? So I can write something down?
Yeah, I guess the meeting is open. We're here to endorse A and R plans, revised plans that have been reviewed. Larry Graham, do you have any comments on?
I don't have any comments on it. I did draw on my plan where the plans changed. Do you have one that goes that?
No, I didn't. I pre- we could talk about it if you wanted to. But it basically changed right here. You made this area, yeah, the line pitches back a little bit more. We literally pitched the line back a little more and came back because we had to maintain the setbacks. Larry actually has a copy of it, I'll show you. But it was marginal. It was in order to, it's probably a good idea to show Jana site plan, then you can see it better, right there?
Yeah.
Oh, she got it, okay. It's because of these ones. I think this is the last one, there it is. See, this is the previous, the one right there is previous, and this is current.
Yeah, is there one more sheet here?
No, that's it. But I can see where you...
Here's my red line. I got one with red lines.
You do?
Yeah.
Perhaps the second? No? Could be the very top.
Well, you know what? I think I put them on the sheet that has the buildings on it.
That makes more sense, because I did...
That made more sense.
Yeah. Yeah, because you can see it much more clearly with that sheet. So this is the one that triggered it, right there.
Yeah, some, there's some down this way.
There it is. It was because we had to address them.
So, the red line is the previous plan. And this is where they had an issue, here, and here, and here. And it was like a foot, foot and a half, two feet. I didn't, you know...
And the issue was side setback?
Yeah.
Yeah, it didn't meet the 15 foot, so, but that was, the red was their previous line. And now, of course, the black is the line that has been adjusted to.
You've expanded the buffer on that side of the property, so... No one's gonna be upset about that.
No.
That's why it was all, it was all actually favorable, and here it was just to the...
And the area...
Yes, yes.
And the area remained the 12 and a half at 76.2.
So you didn't have to retype up a bunch of stuff?
No, because we promised.
This was the way to fix it, rather than messing with the buildings, which might have messed with the roads.
We tried, trust me, couldn't, we tried.
And the other thing that changed a little bit was the length of this...
Tiny bit.
No, if I were you, you...
Any questions from the board?
I need to make sure.
Yeah, you just cut it out.
Katrina, any questions of Jill or Larry?
We were just talking about the old sign, Dana, that I'll just, she said just cut it up.
Literally cut it out.
Because she'll walk out of here with this one tonight, and you'll get us copies?
That's why I have a copy if you want to sign one too.
Oh, these are the copies of A and R, and also the...
Everything, yep. There's two A and R and then two full sets.
Um, yeah.
That way you can keep the signs on, and I can keep the signs on. So these are A and R.
Okay, does the board usually sign the paper copies?
Yeah, so you get to have a copy. And then I'll bring that, and I'll email you the electronic sign, then you just want to vote.
I'd like to unvote. Can I have a motion to endorse the plan?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All who's in favor?
Aye.
It's passing unanimously.
I know, I was in the office today, I just got your message.
So you were calling me, telling me to come, and I was on my way.
No, I was calling you, telling you I couldn't get hold of him.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, Lou, yeah, do a Lou.
I thought mine was bad.
Yeah, me too.
I did want to ask the board's guidance on how many sets of plans are usually given out to town departments, if any. I don't see anything in the rules and regs that asks for additional sets, other than, you know, the one set that is approved. I'm not sure if there are any departments that require the large sets.
The fire department told us to give them 11 by 17, remember what that means? I think water's gonna get a big one, because we file with them. Concom obviously will get big.
I agree with that.
I will tell you, Monday I sent around, I emailed the decision, and I emailed to send the plans to everyone. And I said, please contact me if you would like a hard copy of the decision. I didn't want to promise plans, because I wasn't sure if we were supposed to supply them.
Some people who have seen them on the review process, and in general, those are the similar plans.
Which is dangerous, though, because they're not the final plans, and a lot of them say, I don't know if I have final plans.
Who has to approve something? Water department has to approve something?
We have to go back through anyway.
I've always thought that it was...
So we showed them, they get both sets set. So the only one that said anything, though...
I think it's a real benefit to have the PDFs, because you have them, you can look in detail. You can get as close as you want to any...
Yeah. I keep them all in PDF, I try not to keep the...
I think electronically is the way.
This plan signed, and...
And this plan's not yours?
So you're taking this?
Yep, I'll send you. Okay, then, these are, these are the plan, the way we did it to Rich's plan. We're doing some copies in MyLabs that are actually gonna get recorded with the registry, and others do not. So for example, the file index sheet obviously does, but Rich gave me one full set. This sheet does, this sheet does not get recorded with the registry. So you'll see that some of them do that are MyLab, and some of them aren't MyLab. Like, these do not record at the registry, but they're obviously part of the plan set. So we asked that you sign all of them, or those that are MyLab. And then what I did do is I brought an extra set, if you want to sign one full paper that actually is retained as your copy with Katrina, even though I take this set with me.
That's fine, why don't we do that?
I did two sets, but I didn't really think you wanted to sign two. But, you know, I didn't want to be presumptuous.
I think it's important the building department, water department, conservation commission. You know, in terms of, unless you have electronic copies.
I want two hard copies, because we blow the office...
We've already voted on your plan, so we don't need to...
Yep, nope. Larry, you just want Larry to tell you, he reviewed them, and these are the plans that we signed up on.
Okay.
Did you hear Larry, he would like two hard copies?
Absolutely, we've been with, right?
Yeah.
Sign, though, I'll make, Rich is gonna make copies, and I'll send them out tomorrow.
One to carry around, and one to keep me on...
Do you want the electronic tip?
Jill, he wants to sign all of MyLab?
Oh, yeah.
Because I volunteered to...
Is there a way for staffs on the table?
I know, they should have everywhere. Of course they don't, and you never did this.
Sign them all, and then just keep moving.
Probably. And then you can start here, you can start signing one, and then we can just go in the middle. You wanna be the next one to sign it on?
We'll put your water behind you.
You can do it like this. Oh, did I tell you the night you were having that one? As long as it's registry, right? I'm supposed to have records.
Oh, are you doing all of it?
Oh, did you do it? Did you sign the talk too?
Wait, do them all at once? No, I mean...
They're all over the place, Jill.
They are. This is Rich, can't blame me.
I made it, I made it happen.
Well, just because they are weird sides, so it's easier sometimes just to keep going.
Somebody's gonna have to check that all signatures are...
Oh, I will.
We're all over the place.
Got yourself almost...
Oh, the MyLab paper trucks are the worst, they don't feel.
They go deep.
They do.
I'm gonna change my signature, just a little. New secretary's a...
Oh, you can't see it, right? Okay, you gotta separate this one, nobody's gonna see it. Go right down there. No, it was really hard to see. Gee, you're gonna be our, like, catch us, because you will know we have them when we sign. We always do it somewhere, right?
Well, in the state, yeah, that works.
Paper copies, which you usually sign, you can see them.
Didn't you say you were sending copies of all the MyLabs?
Yes, I'll make copies of everything.
Why are you sending people?
Because these are different.
You have control... You should always, if I take the copy, you should keep the copy.
Some are going to the registry, and some do not have to go to the registry. They just send them all to the next place.
You know, these say...
Oh, I didn't know.
They don't care.
Yeah.
They say, oh, we're missing that.
Oh, let me tell you, I have had every experience you can have at the registry.
I'd be terrified, I had to go in there.
Oh, wait, when you have registry, then that's something, and you refer to all the sheets. One time I went to the registry five times on one project. Every time I went, they banned me out for something.
How much does it cost to file with the registry?
Seventy-five dollars.
A sheet, right?
The registry... I've got a little there than the, yeah, seventy-five sheet, that's why we don't, before you won't... Listen, every time I go, it's seventy-five a reference, too, when you do a document. It's expensive.
You get a whole document, whether it's five pages or fifty pages.
If some documents are seventy-five, one twenty-five, one eighty-seven, five hundred, that's just...
Signing as fast as I can, there we go.
Gee, look at the back, this is...
Okay, that's fine.
Would you slow down?
Yeah, slow down. I've been locked up too long.
Pondscaping plan. I'm trying to figure out what it was, it looked like a, like a labyrinth or something, huh?
Oh, I need the, oh, the, yes, thank you. Yeah, the good pen. I've had that happen, too, where somebody goes, eh, and the stamp came right off. I was like, okay.
At the registry?
Then I went one time, right? They didn't appreciate this. The guy took my plan, and he went, hmm, that looks like raised ink. Scratched the entire name off, he goes, bye, so I left again.
I, yeah?
I called the architect, and I said, you know what, you gave me a bad plan, give me another one. The definition of insanity, doing the same thing over, expecting a different reaction. The guy gives me the same exact ink, same exact plan.
Well, certain copiers did do that.
But you can't, you're not allowed to copy. You have to have an ink press, that's why.
No, but the drawings, they don't care how the drawing's done on the drawing. But I don't remember if it was Manolter or Canon, I had one that laid the stuff on the surface of the paper. You could scratch it off, and the guy did not appreciate them.
No, they do not, I can assure you.
So you went to some of those?
Yeah, I guess.
Those are easier, though, because they're not MyLab, so they're easy to see. Somewhere these will have it.
David, let's go over here, so Gina...
Sounds like a plan.
Wouldn't it be easier to just switch the plans?
Well, they're all there, so Dave and I have to do these.
You could, but the switching of our ink, I wouldn't even have, I would've just been signing away. That's very interesting. So you're going over to Jean.
I have my eye on your glasses, they're down there.
Okay.
You want to step on them, Bill?
All right.
I'm glad you came, Larry.
I didn't get to sign anything.
You didn't have anything better to do.
Oh, you already did, that was the one, good.
That was the opposite. You didn't have them in order, right? You didn't sign them in different places on that block, did you? What you did?
Oh, he's teasing, he's teasing.
I already saw it, then, dude. Nobody's gonna walk out.
Oh, oh, thank you. He's so good. I'd be the one to step on him, trust me. Oh, you're the loser. Over there, can we leave? I like this, oh, just, I like the horses.
We'll do some sort of a...
This was a horse I used to have, somebody painted it for me.
You can, it's...
Okay, you're gonna do it?
Yeah, we're gonna do, we're gonna do them together, right?
I can tell you, you can tell.
That's an artistry you're doing, you're a great professional. I can't even read, I'm just...
You hear water coming?
Yeah, it's Jean, yeah.
It's sort of, it wasn't really a water coming, but...
It's there. It's here. Okay, you did, okay. I'll just sign away. It is gonna be expensive. My cario loves it, because then he gets charged more, because he undertakes a little...
Nobody said it's gonna be easy.
That's a, that's a nice one, too. Look, that's just like a...
Oh, well, Rich?
Is that Rich or...
Can't tell.
Well, condo docs are worse.
Yeah, I think that's worse.
Condo docs are worse, yes.
Okay, I have to make a con, don't say anything, because I have to do condo docs for this, too.
But, well, that, they should be out to the east, because they're only too young, so it can't mix until... It's when you've got tons of units, in single buildings.
I have that when I go to commercial. Oh, yeah, site infrastructure, so...
Yeah, the thing is, you put the utilities on the grading and the drainage, it just gets so bunched up. I mean, separating them out.
It really is, it's easier for the contractor, too, not those mistakes you can make.
But we got two sheets on these.
I'll get my exercise.
Thank you for your help.
Easy.
That has to be good. And then, so those are your copies tomorrow. I might even, you know, I pick up the certificates of no appeals from the town clerk. I think what I'm probably gonna do is just drop off the sets for you. So how many do you want extra, please?
What were they saying, the water department?
Yeah, just a little bit of...
Oh, my gosh, we're gonna order...
Some landscape is gonna be out.
So if you're...
I'll give you four copies?
Yeah, excluding Larry's.
Yeah, Larry, I'm sending myself, yep.
I see the progress on our...
Yeah, that sounds good. That's manageable if some end up in my office. You have the PDFs, too.
If you don't want that, Ben, it's on... Nineteen sheets?
Sixty-two degrees.
It was sixty-two degrees.
Whatever you want, you don't want, I will, I will give them up.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You heard, we're gonna get rain, I mean, still tomorrow.
I mean, the big smell is like...
We get two inches, we think it's like a heat...
Yeah, I need to say when we're gonna get temperatures, because every time I say that, I get, every time I say, "We're gonna have a big storm," it's gonna come.
People on the side, that's sucking in, you know?
Yeah. And it's their second year in a row.
We're going back to the...
With all the equipment that they have to maintain and they have. I mean, how do you keep people on? Because then when you have a big storm, you don't have people on.
Oh, you're going back?
Yeah, we're going, no, we're...
I want to know. Usually they are contractors, some general contractors.
You do see houses, I mean, Said's houses are still there, just working on, you know? The last one.
You have the same trouble, I am trying to get them to flush.
So, and so this is an unsigned.
That's unsigned, do you want it, or you know?
You don't know.
You know what? I don't even want it. You probably shouldn't, because then you're just gonna get, it'll get mixed up.
And, and this is an unsigned A and I.
We don't need that. I'll take that.
Okay.
Because I have this.
Because I have the signed paper on the A and I.
And I have the signed A and I, too.
We can go back now, sorry.
I can go back, okay. All right, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna deliver copies. You want to sign it in that pen, too, Bill?
Do you really wanna roll on that way?
Pardon?
Do you really wanna roll?
No, I usually roll it the other way. But I started and I wasn't going back.
On Nylars, I roll them that way.
Larry, just an objective surface.
With the Nylar, sometimes you will.
All right, Katrina, just so we can move along, uh, Larry, you might have a comment, too, on this.
Hey, on the Raleigh Village Green.
Right.
Too much, huh?
No, please, thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll see me again soon.
I have a feeling. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, bye.
Okay, see you later.
Do you need some help getting stuff out?
Absolutely not, I'm okay. I assume the ones are ready, supposed to be there at eight-thirty.
Okay, um, I...
You going through Middleton?
You might just bury me.
Oh, the way I drive?
Hey, you're a camper.
Take care.
Bye-bye, thanks.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, the Raleigh Village Green, um, I received a call from the, the chief of police here in Raleigh, um, asking if he had any problem with, um, naming the way Heritage Way, um, and assigning street numbers, as opposed to just having a private way at the Raleigh Village Green with A, B, C, D units. And I, I said I'd get back to him if the planning board had a problem. Larry, um, brought up the, the fact that the planning board does have jurisdiction over naming ways, and so if you don't agree with Heritage Way, you can say something now, or if you agree with it, you might wanna take a vote. Um, I told the, the police chief, I'd bring it up at the meeting and, and get back to him on the outcome in time.
I mean, it's fine with me, but does the developer care? I mean, that they're doing...
He said...
He's the one that came up with it. Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Heritage Way is much better.
Actually, when I talked to him, he said, "I'm not sure who came up with it." So, uh, some, someone came up with it, and...
All's in favor of the naming the road Heritage Way? I'm sorry, can I have a motion?
Did someone make a motion? All right.
Cliff made a second...
I'll second it, or second it.
All is in favor?
All right.
I did so much, you better name them something.
Plus for nine, nine-one-one, that's what he needs.
Yeah.
Okay, and as far as the light pole, you wanted me to explain that?
Sure.
Um, you forwarded, um, an email about, about our concerns about the fact that on that transition pole, where the electric lines from Main Street go down into the ground, there's a, a pole there now. There was going to be a light put up there, just a normal old, you know, regular light. Um, I said I would check in with the, the plan, I forwarded the email to Larry. Um, I called the municipal light department, and I found out that it is their policy to put a light on that transition pole. Um, I said, "Is there, can we have a waiver granted if the planning board feels that a light isn't in order?" He said, "It's, it's easier than that, just the developer just had to go talk to him, make sure that there was adequate lighting at the junction of the main road." And so they're just dealing with it on their own. So it's really a non-issue.
Yeah, I, I weighed in, I mean, I thought, at best, it should be a temporary situation, at best. I don't think, whatever should be a permanent one, it was needless, because we already had light.
There's no light on it.
Not a good place for it. No. It was kind of superfluous. Didn't serve the development, plus it was right next to the house. House. And it was superfluous to the...
I have to say, when I asked how the abutter found out that there was supposed to be a light there, because there was no light there, he just knew there was going to be one. I guess he happened to talk to the crew when they were putting the transition pole in, and someone told him that it's standard policy to put a light up on the pole. But I guess it was the developers', it was never his intention to put a light on that.
Also, all he has to do is request a waiver or whatever.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the light, because I, I don't think the planning board even sees the lighting plan. Uh, I think, he sits down with the municipal light plant after their approval.
Yeah, that, that's generally what happens. But in the past, we've seen some lighting plans. Right, yeah.
But all leaves to do is maybe bring a light closer to the junction of Main Street.
Certainly, I don't want a light in someone's window. Well, the only question I have, uh, should we get back to the person who filed this inquiry, the abutter? Uh, let him know, you know, what we found out?
Was it an official inquiry to the planning board?
Well, well...
Or do you wanna take a vote and send him something?
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, I mean... Yeah, like a motion to, uh, for our planner, Tom Planner, Katrina, to...
Could it just be an email?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, to email to... Just, you've got the email, right? To summarize, to summarize the investigation and the resolution to this, that's all.
Second.
All's in favor?
Oh, did someone make a motion there?
Yeah. Yeah, it was, uh, Cliff.
Oh, okay.
Second. I, I, second by Gina.
Gina!
You're done, second.
He's okay, I did it for years, it's instant, it's second.
We share, we write one, and then a letter.
Is there anything else?
Did you look at the town report?
No. I will, though.
I gotta get that in Thursday, so... Does anyone else want to see the town report, or is that something that usually the chairman just does, or...
Uh, well, I mean, I wouldn't mind looking at it, but...
Okay. All right, is that okay?
Want me to forward it to you? You'll forward it to him?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I'll forward it to you.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
If you're interested, I could give you a copy.
Sure.
I mean, the board has, has voted on it in the past, but I don't know if that's necessary.
Oh, do they?
We have in the past, yeah.
Okay.
Geez, I kinda combination this right now. Yeah, well, you know, it's not a big deal.
I just, it's due this, uh, we only had two weeks to do it, and so I just did it, and...
You wanna print it out and look at it now? I don't care, I'm sure, I'm sure it's fine. We have a planner now.
Is it time for me to make a motion that we adjourn?
Yes.
I made a motion that we adjourned.
And I will second that motion. All's in favor?
All right.
Thank you for coming, though.
Yep.